Call the meeting to order. Welcome to your city commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM, at midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Due to the restriction of social distancing and prohibition of gathering of 10 or more people to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the city commission meeting will not be open to the public. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, COMA, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Citizens may submit questions for the city commission to be read during public comment unless they are related to an agenda item. Questions on agenda items will be read during the discussion on that topic. Submit your questions to cwilliamson@firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on March 24th. Ms. Williamson informs me that no questions have been submitted. I will also let the public know that two city commissioners, myself and Commissioner Leonhard, are here in the city chambers, and the other commissioners are joining us remotely. So all five of us are present for the meeting and are ready to go. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. The first order of business for this evening's meeting are a series of four proclamations which I will read. And normally, we would have a representative of the organization here for me to present the proclamation. Obviously, that's not the case this evening. But I will read the proclamations, and we have arranged to have them mailed to each of the representatives for the various organizations. City of Leavenworth, Kansas, proclamation. Whereas members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role to the government of the Republic of South Vietnam in 1961, and whereas in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam, and whereas by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 543,000 troops was reached. And whereas on January 27th, 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of all United States prisoners of war held in North Vietnam, and the withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. And whereas more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members of the Armed Forces were wounded. And whereas the Vietnam War was an extremely divisive issue among the people of the United States, and was also a conflict that caused a generation of veterans to wait too long for the United States public to acknowledge and honor the efforts and services of such veterans. Now therefore, I'm Iron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim March 29th, 2020 to be Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. I encourage all residents to observe appropriate ceremonies and activities to provide appreciation to the Vietnam War veterans. In witness whereof, I set my hand affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 24th day of March in the year of 2020. Second proclamation. City of Kansas, Leavenworth, Kansas, whereas personal and household savings are fundamental to America's stability and vitality, and whereas adequate emergency savings, retirement funds, and safe debt income ratios are critical components of personal financial security, and whereas personal financial security of service members is a crucial aspect of military readiness, and whereas Military Saves is a national social marketing campaign to persuade, encourage, and motivate service members and their families to take financial action in building wealth through saving money and reducing debt. And whereas Armed Forces Bank, North America, is a partner in the Military Saves campaign and is committed to helping its customers, employees, and their family members, as well as all service members, take immediate financial action to build wealth, not debt. Now therefore, I'm Iron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of April, 2020, as Military Saves Month. I hereby call upon the residents of Leavenworth, Kansas, to set a personal savings or debt reduction goal, make a simple savings plan, and take action on that plan or take another positive wealth-building action during Military Saves Week, and pledge to sustain that action during the following year. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 24th day of March in the year of 2020. Third proclamation. Whereas the City of Leavenworth shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing, and whereas the Leavenworth Police Department, University of St. Mary, Alliance Against Family Violence, and St. Luke's Cushing join together to raise public awareness about sexual violence during the month of April, and therefore declare April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And whereas current estimates suggest as few as one in five sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, because victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member. And whereas the theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign is, quote, "Start by believing," unquote. A campaign that is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals, so they can help victims to assess supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Now therefore, I'm Iron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim April, 2020, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 24th day of March in the year of 2020. Fourth and final proclamation. Whereas the Kansas Chapter of the Association of Government Accountants is a professional organization, part of the Association of Government Accountants, which has a network of more than 14,000 members, in 101 chapters in the United States and around the world, and approximately 33 active members representing state, federal, municipal, and private sector accountants, auditors, and financial managers in Kansas. And whereas Association of Government Accountants, Kansas Chapter members, have responded to Association of Government Accountants' mission of advancing government accountability as it continues its broad educational efforts with emphasis on high standards of conduct, honor, and character in its code of ethics, and are making significant advances both in professional ability and in the service to the citizens of Leavenworth by mastering increasingly technical and complex requirements. And whereas the Certified Government Financial Manager Program of AGA provides a means of demonstrating professionalism and competency by requiring certified government financial manager candidates to have appropriate educational and employment history to abide by AGA's code of ethics and to pass three examinations requiring expertise in government environment, government financial management and control, and government accounting, financial reporting, and budgeting, and requires each CGFM holder to maintain certification by completing at least 80 hours of continuing professional education in government financial management topics or related technical subjects every two years. Now therefore, I'm Iron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim March 2020 as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, this 24th day of March in the year of 2020. That completes our proclamations for this evening's meeting. We are in old business now, and the first agenda item in old business is consideration of previous meeting minutes, and those would be the minutes from our meeting two weeks ago on March 10th, 2020. Do my fellow commissioners have any comments or questions about the minutes?
No.
No.
I will entertain a motion on approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from March 10th, 2020, regular meeting.
Is there a second?
There's Commissioner Priceinger, I second.
There's a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder, Commissioner Wilson.
Commissioner Wilson, aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, the motion carries. The minutes are approved from our meeting on March 10th, 2020. New business. We're gonna start the new business, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager to give a relatively brief update on the city's response to COVID-19 health crisis. Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you. I'll be brief this evening as we continue to work through this COVID-19 issue and give an idea of some of the stuff that the city has announced in different platforms, but maybe some people who have not heard what's going on. First of all, I'd like to direct anybody who hasn't seen it to go onto leavenworthcounty.gov and watch the special meeting that the Board of County Commissioners had this morning at 9:00 AM. That was an hour with the Leavenworth County Health Department Director, Jamie Miller. Very good information, I just checked their homepage and that is available. I think everybody can be proud of the efforts of the Board of County Commissioners, Leavenworth County, and the County Health Department. A lot of information, important information was given in that meeting, so I encourage everybody to watch that meeting. Secondly, at the city, we continue to work through providing essential services to our residents. I'm gonna go through a few items here, certainly not an exhaustive list of what's going on, but some of our frequently asked questions. Trash pickup is still taking place, there will be no stoppage of trash pickup. We plan to continue large item pickup by appointment as well. Those are the same rules, and they're available on the website as we've always had with large item pickup. The March 28th trash bag delivery to homes was postponed. I can announce tonight that the Lions Club has selected a date which they will do trash bag delivery, and that will be May 30th. That's probably one of the top two or three questions we get. I know people are, they count on those trash bags. It's a combination of issues. The Lions Club, we don't want them congregating together at the beginning, and also they are having trouble getting enough labor to run those routes, so we ask the public to please be patient with us as we continue to work with the Lions Club and our staff to get those trash bags out to our residents. The brush site and recycling center are closed. First Free Saturdays will also not take place at this time. We are not selling trash bags at City Hall or at the service center as all city facilities remain closed. Fire and police services continue, staff taking precautionary measures to prevent illness. We do have the police chief here tonight, he's gonna share some remarks about his department. Rearfront Community Center remains closed right now till at least April 23rd, which is the county mandated date given by the order. Activities, classes, special events, all included in that. Municipal Court will not be held on March 26th, April 2nd, April 9th, April 16th, or April 30th. Anyone who has a court date during those dates should contact Municipal Court. You can do that by municipalcourt@firstcity.org. The phone number is also available on the city's website, leavenworthks.org. At the, speak briefly about the parks. Playground equipment at the parks is off limits. That is in the county order that all playground equipment is off limits. The county order and the city itself does encourage you to continue to use our parks, observing the social distancing requirements and avoiding congregating as groups. Just briefly, I'm gonna talk about the decision process we made between the open spaces and the playground. Those are clearly defined by the order, but we have elements such as tennis courts, basketball courts, and a dog park at the city, as well as skate park. The decision at this point has been made between myself, the Public Works, the Parks and Recreation Director, in consultation with the police chief. Basketball courts at this time are open, but we are monitoring them. We want to allow individuals to be able to shoot baskets. There are separate goals, there's two full courts down there, but we will be monitoring those closely. If games start developing, we will, we have the ability to remove backboards or rims if need be, but we'll monitor that. The tennis courts at this time are open, we're early enough in the year that the play is very light, and there's natural separation there. If we start seeing groups playing tennis and congregating before, we will close those. And the dog park, we made the decision to close, and a couple reasons behind that. One, it's a natural congregation for dog owners. The primary purpose behind that is for the exercise for the dogs. We encourage you to use our parks to walk your dog. We are also concerned about the possibility of residents letting their dogs go into the dog park area and then returning to their car or moving away, and we really don't want unattended dogs. So we ask that you bear with us, we hope that this works through the process, maybe in the next 30 days or so, and that we can return to normal. So that's a little insight into the process we went through to make those decisions. A couple other just quick notes before I turn it over to the police chief. Easter egg hunt scheduled for April 4th is postponed. We're gonna do an event at some point with the eggs that we have. Obviously, it won't be tied to Easter, but we do have a lot of eggs. The Leavenworth City Spring Cleanup scheduled for April 18th is postponed. We'll provide more information on maybe an alternative event as we move through the summer into the fall. Dog tag registration is extended to May 31st without an assessment or late fee. And as we've stated previously, those who have participated in the senior rebate program are automatically renewed for 2020. Final note that I have for services is the Leavenworth Public Library is closed. However, the library offers video streaming, ebooks, e-audiobooks, and online magazines. We ask residents to go to leavenworthpubliclibrary.org to get some more information related to their offerings. One other quick note that I looked at today, two and a half weeks ago today was our very first COVID-19-related post. We didn't post anything else for four days, and since March 11th, the city has made no less than 37 posts. It's, I bring that up because it's rapidly accelerating. We're trying to keep information that's relevant to health, to city services, to best practices from our public health officials. So please, if you want information on what's going on in the city or information that we're trying to share with our public, follow our Facebook post, go to our website, and a lot of that information is provided there. The final thing I'll note is I participated in a League of Kansas Municipalities call today. And just a note to the public that we are concerned about our budget and aware of it. The League is expecting a 25% decrease in sales tax year-over-year, and other revenues down approximately 15%. So just so the public is aware that we are mindful of that and are taking immediate action now, so that we can be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over to the police chief.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, take note that the public health officer issued a new public health order that took effect at midnight last night. The burden for enforcing that relies on the Leavenworth Police Department and all law enforcement officers in Leavenworth County. To that end, myself, Sheriff Dediki, and all of the police chiefs from the other communities in Leavenworth met with the health director yesterday at 1 o'clock at the health department for about an hour. Gave us an opportunity to formulate as consistent a plan as we could about enforcement of the order. And so it was a good meeting, we had an opportunity to evaluate and talk about understanding and expectation. So I want to address that. The change would be that some businesses now have been ordered to be closed. So here's how we are going to address that as best we can today. The police department conducted an assessment of our community. We went out and took a look at those businesses that are open, those businesses that were closed, in an effort to identify those that might potentially be in violation of the restrictions. There were about three or four or five maybe that we had questions about. So we took note of that, we came back, looked at the public health order again, making sure that we are all in agreement about where a particular business might stand. Tomorrow, it would be my intent to send officers out into the community, into those businesses, to do a compliance check, to see if they are in fact complying with the restrictions placed by the public health department. We would then make our best effort to educate and inform them about what the rules are relative to their business and whether or not we might agree or disagree about their particular position. We would give them an opportunity to contact the health department and see if there is a provision that allows them to remain open. That would be our approach for tomorrow. And then sometime after that, later in the afternoon, or no later than Thursday morning, we are going to be in an enforcement mode. If we educate and inform and warn a business that they are not in compliance and they remain open in violation of the order, we will take enforcement action either in the form of a citation, simply because we cannot allow a business to violate the public health order. We're gonna make every effort to make sure there's no misunderstandings or on every opportunity to understand what the rules are. But at some point, no later than about Thursday morning, we will begin the enforcement activity and make businesses close or take enforcement action. And so that's how we're going to address that relative to businesses. Again, we took an assessment this morning. I was very satisfied that a large majority of people are in compliance with the rules as we understand them from the public health department. There's just a few businesses out there that we need to. We do have one business that to this point has been very defiant. They're making it clear they are not closing. We will deal with that as appropriately as we can, no later than tomorrow afternoon or Thursday. So that's where we stand with that, that's how we intend to address that. And that is pretty consistent across Leavenworth County with, you know, my discussions with the other law enforcement agencies. So, any questions about?
Well, it sounds like most of them are complying.
Right. Yeah, we only found a few that we had a little question about, and we'll address that tomorrow. Any other questions about that?
No.
Okay. There's a couple of other things I want to share with you about that that we've come up. Yesterday, the Governor, Governor Kelly issued an executive order that would have some impact on things like driver's license and car tags that are set to be renewed or expired. We put that governor's order and that information on the city's website and distributed that as widely as we can. But understand that if you right now, say your driver's license or your car tags are set to expire at the end of this month, and you feel like you need to renew them for obvious reasons, you can't do that. The governor has ordered that, there's an extension. 60 days past the expiration of the order, those are extended. So you have plenty of time, people shouldn't worry about that. There'd be plenty of opportunity for people to get their driver's license and all of that, car tags renewed, that sort of thing. If you have a question, please call us, and we'll be glad to help you with that. Now, let me provide one caveat. If your driver's license was supposed to be renewed in July, and you haven't done that, you can't take advantage of this order, but those are currently pending. And so again, all that information we put on the website this morning to make sure that people understood, there's time, we're aware that these restrictions are making it difficult to get that stuff done. And so that's available, and people should be good to go with that stuff. Questions about any of that? One final thing that I want to address, there seems to be some general sense in the community about travel restrictions. I've seen a little bit of that, where people feel like, or at least have it in their head, that they have to have some verification that they're essential and they're going to work. We are not doing that. We are not randomly stopping people asking for their paperwork. That is a much, much higher level of restriction that would require a much different status than we are at. We're not doing that. We are doing normal police routine matters. If, for example, you're speeding and you get pulled over, that's what it's for. But no law enforcement agency in Leavenworth County is pulling people over to verify that they have paperwork, that they're essential. For example, someone that works at a grocery store and is going to work. We are not doing that, and that's not appropriate.
That, I mean, that would be more for if the state really shut down right.
That would, that'd be at a much, much higher level, at a national level, and that's some, a little bit of, that started to generate a little discussion in the community. I wanted to address that, we are not doing that, that should not be happening.
Yeah.
Okay? So that's it from me. Again, the police department is functioning, we are continuing to respond to calls and handle police work just like we always do. We've scaled down some of the civilian employees at the police department just to kind of, you know, practice the social distancing. But that's kind of where we are from the law enforcement perspective.
Chief, thank you for that rundown. How are your men doing, men and women?
Doing well. They were quite happy today, I was down there. They asked me what I was doing here, I told them I was coming to ask for some money to buy new police cars, they were very excited about that. They're doing quite well, good morale out there, doing a good job, doing the best they can to make sure that they're following the protocols, so we don't have an exposure of a first responder, which would cause some additional heartache and headache for us, but all doing well.
Good, let's make sure they're careful out there.
Right, yes sir.
I'm gonna go ahead and go around the horn with my fellow commissioners to see whether they have any comments, and I'll begin with Commissioner Priceinger.
I have, I have no, nothing further. I want to thank the chief for a very comprehensive report, as well as the city manager for what services are still available and those that are not available and putty during this time. I have nothing else.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowder?
Yeah, same here. Appreciate your making sure that we're aware of everything that's going on. It's changing day by day, so thanks so much.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, just definitely want to say thank you to the chief, as well as the public health department, and to all of the agencies who have been helping assist the citizens in the community who need to schmoove. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone who supported.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Right, I'm right there with all of them. Thank you, Chief Kitchens, and Lummer County Health Department, and County Mission, and other agencies as well. Great work.
My comments are, we'll be brief. During the COVID-19 health crisis, the overriding priority of the city commission, the city manager and city staff is to do our very best to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of all Leavenworth citizens. I think that's clear with the city manager's report today and also the report from the police chief. In focusing on this priority, we will share pertinent and accurate information relating to COVID-19, adjust the delivery of city services to account for the social distancing requirements stipulated by the county health department, and as much as possible, advocate for our small businesses, which are taking the brunt of necessary state and local government actions to prevent the spread of COVID-19. My thoughts and prayers go out to the county's citizens and all citizens in Kansas who have contracted the virus, and of course, their family members. And also, my thoughts and prayers go out to all members of the healthcare profession across the nation, and also here locally and regionally. Doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists, nurses aides. And I would encourage everyone to remember what our health professionals are telling us. And they are telling us that they stayed at work for us or for you, please stay at home for me. And that was one thing I shared during our Facebook Live Town Hall last Friday, and that's still very much the case. My next Facebook Live Town Hall meeting is scheduled for Friday, this Friday, March 27th, 2020. It'll be at 10:00 AM again, and I would encourage everyone to tune in. There were quite a, quite a number of citizens participating or attending the town hall, and I think we had 2,000-plus views. So it's a good way to get information out. Those town halls will continue on a regular basis in the, in the, with the purpose of just providing the very best pertinent and accurate information to the public. And my final message to everyone is just to stay safe, stay healthy, and stay home. So now we're gonna continue with our meeting. And the first gen, well, the second agenda item under new business is the revised Port Authority Agreement and Board Appointments.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you. The Leavenworth County Port Authority Agreement before you has sort of been in a long time in the works. The Board of County Commissioners, along with the city commission, decided well over a year ago that it was time to update the 1969 agreement. And with the primary and almost sole purpose, I think, of bringing the other cities in our county officially onto the Port Authority Board. Changing from five members to seven members, giving the county and the city two seats, and each of the cities, Lansing, Baser, and Tonganoxie, one seat. Work, amends work was done by City Attorney David Waters, County Counselor David Van Paris, to also update all the relevant state statutes referenced, clean up the language, and give us a up-to-date agreement from the 1969 agreement. The county approved an agreement, the city did have a small alteration, eliminating what was a unilateral dissolution paragraph, meaning that one entity, the city or the county, could dissolve the port authority. That has been changed and passed by the Board of County Commissioners, now requiring both parties to jointly find that the Leavenworth Port Authority would be dissolved if we ever got to that point. So that was resolved. The county did also make one small change related to funding of the port authority. The previous agreement indicated that the Leavenworth County Port Authority, it spelled it out, was the primary funding source. This one eliminates the primary funding source and allows funding to come from any of the entities. allows funding to come from any of the entities. However, that is, doesn't change in any meaningful way how the port authority is structured or the agreement. So the county has passed the agreement that is before you. Staff has reviewed. We believe that it meets the city's expectations and the port authority parameters for a new agreement put forth by the City Commission and the Board of County Commissioners over the last year. If you have any questions related to the Port Authority Agreement, I will note that if it passes tonight, the agreement is effective tomorrow, which would dissolve the existing Leavenworth County Port Authority Board and instruct its new members to appoint either one or two, depending on how many they get in the agreement, as soon as possible, so the port authority can resume business. If you have any questions related to the agreement, I will do my best to answer them. We also have City Attorney David Waters is participating in the meeting remotely and can answer any questions you may have there.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions or comments on the revised Leavenworth County Port Authority Agreement?
This is Commissioner Bowder. Over the last, this has been going on for over two years, I think, now, or three years, that they've been talking about this. So I think the agreement is good, and I'm glad to see it move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowder.
This is Commissioner Preisinger. I have no questions or comments.
Commissioner Wilson?
Of course, as a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Leonhard. Okay, we're going to need two motions. The first motion, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the Leavenworth County Port Authority Agreement. Is there?
Yeah, I move to approve the approval of the LCPA Agreement with Leavenworth County as presented.
I second it, Mr. Bowder.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We're going to keep the same voting order this evening, so we'll begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. The agreement is approved.
Mayor, if I could, I know you're going to keep the same order, but I still would ask that you call each of their names, just for the public, so that they're hearing that.
Okay. Is it okay keeping the same order?
You can keep the same order, yeah. But I would ask that you call their name each time.
Yes. Thank you. Roger. I will do that. The next motion is to appoint, Mr. Kramer, we're going to appoint two individuals?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just briefly state, so the city, as I mentioned just previously, to the seven member, the new seven-member Port Authority Board, the city of Leavenworth will appoint two members of the commission choosing, the Leavenworth County, again, two members of their choosing. And then each of the cities, Lansing, Baser, and Tonganoxie, will have one appointee each. The city has put forth Rick Schneider, who is already on the Port Authority Board, who is a well-known member of the community in the banking industry with a sterling reputation. And then the other member that we put forth tonight is Greg Cause, also a business owner. Greg is, works throughout the metro, the county, understands development, has been on the Port Authority Board, has been on the Water Board, is currently on the Airport Advisory Board. I think Greg's contributions to the community over many decades are well-known. So we would put forward Rick Schneider. And the reason the terms are staggered as they are, is that's how the agreement sets it out, the first being a three-year term, and the second being a four-year term, to get people on appropriate cycles for future seats.
Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Um, this is, this is Commissioner Bowder. I just, I wondered about Greg Cause. I know either Greg or Steve were on the board before, and they had to leave because of a conflict of interest. We don't have that problem anymore, right?
Yeah, that is correct. There's, there's no issues.
Great. I'm good with that, then.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Leonhard, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Okay. I move to approve the city appoint the following individuals to the LCPA Board, Rick Schneider to a term expiring March 25, 2023, and Greg Cause to a term expiring March 25, 2024.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
And I vote aye as the mayor. The vote is five to zero. The ayes have it. The motion carries. So we've appointed these two gentlemen to the terms to the Leavenworth County Port Authority Board. Next agenda item is to consider increase of admin fees for demolitions.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a request to increase the administrative fee for demolitions. Currently, that administrative fee is $100, and I think that $100 has probably been in place for many, many years. And that fee, what it covers, what it should cover, but it doesn't come close to covering, is the cost of staff's time involved in the demolition process. And that process involves looking at the property, having surveys done, notifying utility companies, doing billings, notifying the owners. And it really takes about 10 different staff, staff person's time to do that. And it, and it can take, you know, up to six months to get from start to finish for those. So it's a lot of work for staff for that $100 fee that we pay for that. And I know that Julie Hurley, the, what's her title?
Plany.
Plany, thank you. Director.
She got a new title in 2019.
Sorry, Julie.
She's got a new title.
Has said that they've been, they've heard from people that call in that say, you know what, we prefer the city do that because it's so much cheaper.
Cheaper, yeah.
So maybe this rate will also encourage people to fix up the property and get it, get it back in shape. So staff would recommend the approval of this increase to $1,000.
And spend $100 for a long time, hasn't it?
Many, many years, yes.
Did you, and not that this matters, because it really doesn't, but did you check around to any other, like, communities or anything?
I did not, and I don't know if this Hurley did or not, but.
That really doesn't matter. I mean, the main thing is, is that we're not covering anywhere near their costs with $100.
That's correct.
So. Any questions or comments for our city clerk from commissioners?
This is David Waters. I just want to add to that a little bit, that, you know, we have looked into this, and, you know, the city cannot just kind of charge arbitrary fees and such on a percentage basis. So, you know, there's been a good faith effort, I know by the clerk's office, to estimate and, in good faith, what the costs of work that it goes into, and that, that should be recoverable. But I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the dollar amount can't just kind of be picked off, off the top of one's head in some way, in an arbitrary amount. But the statutes do allow for the recovery of actual costs, and allows the staff to, you know, estimate those and track those the best they can to achieve this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waters. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Then I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Leonhard?
I move to approve the increase of the administrative fee for demolitions to $1,000.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
There's a motion and second on this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
And I vote aye as the mayor. Commissioner Griswold, the ayes have it. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We go on to the next agenda item, which is, it's a postponement of public hearing for fire damage structure? Or do we not even?
Yes.
Yeah. We're going to postpone that?
Yeah, Carla will.
I'm sorry. Ms. Williamson?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is on a fire damage structure at 1109 Spruce. On January 28, the City Commission adopted Resolution 2241, setting the public hearing for the matter to be heard tonight. Due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 and health concerns, and now the Health Department issuing the order, we were not able to make that happen. So we would like to reset the public hearing date as April 14, 2020. At the time that we wrote this, that was kind of our direction we were going to go. And I might ask for the city attorney to weigh in a little bit, based off of some information we heard at a meeting held by the league about 3 o'clock this afternoon, where they discussed public hearings. Mr. Waters, do you want to weigh in? Do you think that we need to republish? Or do, can we just postpone?
I think at this point, if it's already been called in one way, that that is probably, you don't need to, probably need to re-notice that itself, because you've kind of, you know, had the hearing now, and now you're giving the notice that anybody that didn't want to show up could have attended this.
Correct, yes.
And you still had the, and you still all attended at the, at the place and at the location, which is where it was. And so I think that that is probably okay in that sense. If you had, you know, not had any meeting at all, in some way, that probably would have required a re-notification in some way on that. So I would think that you have it on the agenda, just as you normally did, and then you're postponing to a time certain, that that is within your discretion to do.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no different than, for example, if you've got planning commission meetings or matters, and if it comes up, and, you know, the commissioner or the planning commissioner asks, you know, to, you know, to table, or to reconsider, or to have some time to make a decision, you don't need to go through the entire notification process if you started that at the time that you gave the original published notification and such.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Waters. I would let the mayor and commissioner know that staff has been working with the property owner on this. They are actively working on repairing the property. So I just wanted to let you know, it's not sitting there, you know, getting worse or becoming ice, or it is being worked on. So at this time, we would ask the City Commission to approve the postponement of this to the April 14 meeting. If we're still unable to do that at that time, we will do a further postponement.
Okay. Good rundown. Any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners on this agenda item?
Yeah.
Hearing done. I'll, I'll have Commissioner Leonhard put a motion on the floor.
I, I move to approve the postponing, the public hearing on the fire damage structure at 1109 Spruce Street as unsafe or dangerous until April 14, 2020.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
There's a motion and a second on this agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Griswold, mayor, aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. This, this motion carries. Next agenda item is Santa Fe's, Santa Fe Trails Cool Hand Luke Gravel Grinder Event.
Carla?
Mayor and Commissioner, this item, we were kind of going back and forth whether or not to put it on the agenda, knowing that the COVID-19 issue was in place. There wasn't that order taking it out through the end of April at the time that we wrote this, and at the time that we were looking at it. As you can see, I did put in the policy report that, you know, we would take that into consideration. I'll back up just a little bit. This, this is a bike race that's held annually and is done by the Santa Fe Trails Bike Shop. As soon as I finished the agenda packet, and I had been in contact with them, saying, if you have decided to postpone it, which they were considering as well, just let me know as soon as possible. Of course, as soon as I finished the agenda packet, they called. So I didn't re, I didn't redo the packet. But did want to let you know that they have postponed it. They're going to try again in the fall. The current order would have postponed it anyway, or not allowed it to happen. So we're just going to remove this from the agenda. And our code of ordinance with meeting procedures does say that if an item is removed from the agenda, it does have to be made by motion of, of the commission. So the motion that we're looking for is just to remove this, just completely remove this item from the agenda.
Okay. I move to approve the removal of the Cool Hand Luke Gravel Grinder Event.
From, from this evening's agenda?
Oh, from this evening's agenda.
Is that sufficient, Ms. Williamson?
That is, that is.
Okay. There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Griswold as mayor, aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. So this motion carries. Thank you. Next is agenda item, first agenda item under bids, contracts, and agreements, and it's bids for police vehicles.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the Police Department is before the governing body this evening, asking for you to approve, or to do two things, one of which is reject the bids that we received, and allow us to approve the acquisition of police cars using the state contract from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $182,054. First of all, I apologize for the complex nature of the policy report and the changes that have taken place. It is not normally this complicated to buy police cars. We have seen a lot of volatility and changes over the last couple of years in the police fleet industry. I've talked about this a little bit in the course of things like budget meetings and such with potential changes, but so here we are. Let me start at the very beginning. We have a total of 24 police cars, the black, black and white, or white cars that you would see normally on routine patrol. 20 of them are Dodge Chargers, four of them are Ford Explorer SUV-style vehicles. Way back in 2018, we started to hear from the Dodge Corporation that there potentially were going to be some changes to the car, the Dodge Charger in its current form, that they were probably going to make it smaller. So we began to discuss that and figure out how we were going to move forward with our fleet, but we fully understood we had another year or so to deal with that. Every year, I send my staff to the Police Fleet Expo. This year, it was in Savannah, Georgia. Those are the folks that put together the police cars and the equipment that goes in there and are responsible for that. They were, they were told formally at the expo that, starting in 2021, that the car, the Dodge Charger would be 10 inches shorter than it is now, which is a considerable problem for us in terms of space as a premium in the car. However, the Dodge Corporation did say that we had one final opportunity to get Dodge Chargers, as long as we got to work and got that done by October the 31st of 2019. So we got to work right away. We put together bid specs. We put those out to bid, and we got the bids submitted. On October the 8th of 2019, I came to the governing body and asked for approval to award those bids, which you granted. When that was done, we went ahead with the situation. We placed the order with the Dodge Corporation. On December the 11th of 2019, we were informed by the Dodge Corporation that they were canceling that order, and that they were not going to fill any additional Dodge Charger orders in its, in its current form. They were going to delay everything. In fact, they canceled orders all over the country. I think it was simply a matter of inundation. They were getting something like 700 orders a day, and they just decided they were not going to do that. So they canceled that. So that put us in a position of, all of that work went away. In the meantime, we had been talking about what was going to happen moving forward. It was our best recommendation that we, we transition the fleet to, to all SUVs. It is a matter of space. Space is at a premium with all of the equipment that goes in the car to run the car, all of the equipment that the officers need with them to work on something, and then all of the personal gear that they have, in addition to an appropriate space allowance to transport a prisoner. Not comfortably necessarily, but safely. And so we had internally been making that decision, Dodge canceling it, made it for us. So we went back to a normal routine. We prepared bid specifications again. We put those bid specifications out, soliciting for a Ford SUV-style police car. We did that because we've got a local Ford dealership. We hadn't done that for several years. We hadn't asked to replace any SUVs for a while. So we opened that up locally. years, we hadn't asked to replace any SUVs for a while, so we opened that up locally, it's to, to ensure that our local companies had the opportunity to bid. And so, we received those bids, we received three bids in the, in this recent rotation, and all three of them were wrong, and they were flawed. Hence, the request for you to reject them. So, those three bids, we got from Landmark Dodge, they submitted a Dodge Durango, which is an SUV, but it doesn't meet one of the critical components, which is a specification to have the built-in screen in the car, so that we can run our computers that way, which is a very critical component. Olatha Ford did not meet the bid specs, they included items that we didn't ask for and didn't include items that we wanted. And so, they didn't meet the specifications from a, from a variety of perspectives. Shawnee Mission Ford, we were not allowed to consider their bid, because they failed to submit a non collusion affidavit, which is a bidding and finance rule that requires each, each person to do that, they failed to do that. So, when that happened, we felt like it was in the best interest, given all that had happened with the, with the canceling of everything, to simply move forward with buying the police cars with the state contract. Those are generally less expensive anyway, and would have probably been the case here. And that, the, the state contract for the Ford Explorer is through Shawnee Mission Ford. We, it's clear to, to point that out, though, we didn't consider their bid because they didn't follow the procedures. We reject all of that, and then re, sort of re-go to the state contract situation, which we Shawnee Mission Ford. So, in the 2020 CIP budget, that, that was for this year, we were allocated $190,000 to buy police cars and the equipment. The cost for the four police cars, the SUVs, is a total of $182,054. That is more expensive than a Dodge Charger. And, once we acquire those cars, there will still be the need to acquire some additional equipment that goes on those cars, lights and cages and all of those things. We will exceed the $190,000 budget, I don't know for sure yet, because we have to, you know, price that equipment out, and that is all presuming that you approve the, the request for this evening. We'll work with finance and the city manager's office to make sure that that number is as low as we can, but I do want to be clear that we're going to exceed that budget, and it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000 over what we were allotted. And that is due to the fact that we're buying SUVs, which we just simply didn't anticipate when Dodge canceled that. Again, I apologize for the complex nature, it's not normally this complicated to buy cars, it's just been quite a, an interesting few months here, and I'll do my best to answer whatever questions that you might have about all of it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Chief Kitchens on this particular agenda item?
Commissioner Wilson, I have a question for you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Do you prefer all SUVs, if you had the, the option to, to purchase strictly SUVs, if you want to convert over that way?
Yes, if the Dodge Charger's going to be smaller, I absolutely prefer that. Space is at a premium inside the police car, we simply cannot afford to give away 10 inches or thereabouts, what they were talking about, that would make it very, very difficult to accommodate everything we do. I'm old, I like police cars, there just aren't very many good options anymore, so of the options available, I do prefer the SUV, sir.
All right.
Okay, so these Ford SUVs, these four of them, so they're going to replace four of the old police cars?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And generally, that rule is, they have at least 100,000 miles on them, or three years old. And they are usually in the 110, 115,000 mile range when they finally are cycled out.
Okay.
Assuming that the commission approves the purchase of the four SUVs, what, what timeframe are you looking at, as far as when you would acquire the vehicles, and when would they be put into operation?
Typically, all said and done, by the time we order them, get them here, and get them equipped out, they're about August is when they're rotated out, the old cars are rotated out, and the new ones are rotated in.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for Chief Kitchens on this particular agenda item, from my fellow commissioners? We're going to need two motions, so on the first motion, I would ask Commissioner Leonhard to put a motion on the table for the first part of this.
Okay.
Can, can we, into, into one, okay, into, into one motion? Okay.
Okay, I move to approve rejecting the bids submitted for police, for police cars, and authorize staff to proceed with the acquisition of four Ford SUVs from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $182,054.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Priesinger, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we will begin voting with Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
And Commissioner Griswold, as the mayor, votes aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero. So, we have approved, we've rejected the bids, the initial bid for the police cars, and then approved the purchase of the four SUVs for the police department. Thank you, appreciate it, chief. The next agenda item is consider bid for Ninth and Ottawa Street Stormwater Emergency Repair.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, in late 2018, staff received a call from a citizen in the area of Ninth and Ottawa regarding a sinkhole by the inlet on the south side of the roadway. The site was evaluated, and orange fencing was placed around the sinkhole with the intent to make repairs in the future with monies collected through the stormwater fee. The six-foot diameter stone arch under Ottawa at Ninth Street is about 22 feet deep, and has been in place since the early 1900s. Numerous additions and repairs have been made to the piping system on the north and south of that arch, and little work has been done to the arch itself for the associated inlets throughout the years. Last week, crews were inspecting the site and found that the sinkhole had grown in size, and was now placing the roadway and sewer line running parallel to the arch in jeopardy. Staff produced a plan and project quantities to govern bid uniformity, and requested bids from contractors to complete the fix with the existing condition. This project is not a complete replacement, and we're expected to be a permanent long-term fixture of the structure, but will provide stability for the roadway and fix the project for, for the near term at this time. It is an emergency, as the roadway is in some jeopardy, and so staff did get three quotes, the low quote being from Rodriguez Mechanical in the amount of $82,450. The staff does recommend that bid, we have done work with Rodriguez Mechanical in the past for the emergency repair at Ninth and Ottawa Street Stormwater Repair Project. This was a project that was on our radar for the orange fence projects, we knew it was going to be very large, and the reason that it wasn't, hasn't been in any of the orange fence thus far is, one, because of its size, and two, it's not in anybody's front yard or anybody's backyard, and we are prioritizing orange fence projects right now on individual property. But once it started to put the roadway in jeopardy, it became an emergency issue. So, that item is before you, there are pictures in your packet that show the complexity of the project, and work would begin immediately, and is expected to take about two weeks to complete.
Reminds me a little bit of the project last year at, at Limit Street and Second, Second Avenue that cropped up.
Where the roadway is compromised, yeah.
Any questions or comments from commissioners to the city manager on, on this particular agenda item?
Yes, sir.
There were some photos in the packet, in the read ahead, that were pretty, pretty stark in terms of, of the failure, so, this is, this is necessary, this is why we have the stormwater management program. And if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion from Commissioner Leonhard.
Okay.
Does that, Commissioner Bowder, do you have a question or comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Leonhard.
I move to accept the low bid received from Rodriguez Mechanical Contractors in the amount of $82,450 for the Ninth and Ottawa Street Stormwater Repair Project.
Sir, a second?
Commissioner Bowder.
Commissioner Priesinger, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we will begin voting with Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
You, you.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
And Commissioner Griswold votes aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so we've approved this particular agenda item for this stormwater repair project. Thank you. The next agenda item is consider, consider purchase agreement for property at 713 South Third Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this project is right in the middle of the Second and Chestnut Stormwater Repair Project, that's the multimillion dollar stormwater project, the largest one to date that we're undertaking, that will be funded by bond, bond issuance later this year. Staff, in working with Wilson Company to design the project, identified this property as a potential to make improvements to the detention base and effectiveness, and over, and enhance overall water quality within the project. Staff noticed that the project, the property was for sale, we established what we believed was sort of a fair price range, and have come to an agreement with the property owner to purchase the property in the amount of $53,500. Again, this will become part of the project, the structure will be removed as part of the larger project, and we believe that this makes for a better project, including this piece of property. The commission has any questions, I can answer most of them, we also have Mr. McDonald on the phone, and I would ask that if a motion is made, that it be read verbatim from the motion, as included, per our city attorney, David Waters.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners for the city manager or Mr. McDonald? The only thing I, I would say as the mayor, is that I, I know, thinking about, this thing is almost smack dab in the middle of the, of the area that we're repairing, right, in terms of this project, because it goes from Second and Chestnut, but it all, goes all the way to Third and Olive, I believe, so it is critical that.
It'll make it easier.
It will make it certainly a lot easier to get this work done. That's my recollection, and, and reading the packet before the meeting, that was reinforced to us as commissioners. Are there any, any other comments or questions on this particular agenda item?
This is Commissioner Priesinger, if we do approve the purchase tonight, what is, what are the plans for the building that's on the property, Mr. McDonald?
I can answer that, Commissioner Priesinger, the building, the house on that property will be demolished, that property is ideal for water retention, which obviously is impossible with the structure, so it will be bulldozed and become a part of Wilson's design, and it will be some sort of water quality, water quantity control structure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Kramer or Mr. McDonald? Then I will entertain a motion from Commissioner Leonhard.
I move to approve the acquisition of that certain real property, property commonly known as 713 South Third Street, for a price not to exceed $53,500 exclusives, exclusive of title costs or closing fees, from Stephen L. Stitch, AKA Stephen L. Stitch. Did I say that right?
Spelled differently, yeah.
Oh, okay, just spelled, okay. And directing the mayor or city manager to execute any documents that may be necessary for closing, including but not limited to an assignment assumption of real estate contract with Shadow Partners LLC.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Priesinger, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we will begin voting with Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
And I, Commissioner Griswold, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, the motion carries. Next is, are the consent agenda item for this evening's meeting, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Leonhard.
I move to approve claims for March 7th, 2020, through March 20th, 2020, in the amount of $670,844.11, net amount for payroll number six, effective March 13th, 2020, in the amount of $324,322.30, no police and fire pension.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Priesinger, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this consent agenda item, we will begin voting with Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Griswold, I vote aye. The, the, the ayes have it, the, the vote is five to zero, the consent agenda item is approved. So, before we adjourn, I'm going to turn it over once again to the city manager to see if, if he has anything else for the city commissioners or public.
Just a couple of quick items, as a reminder, March 31st is the fifth Tuesday, so we will not have a meeting on a fifth Tuesday, that's a normal process for the city. And then also, April 7th, the first meeting in April is a study session, we are rescheduling the items on the April 7th study session, so the next time the city commission will meet in regular session will be on April 14th, right here, seven o'clock in the city commission chambers. The only other thing, I had reached out to individual commissioners, we are a couple weeks away from goal setting, but it does fit within the county order, so we would have to definitely limit it. I think we've seen tonight that you can conduct business virtually, but a lot of dialogue back and forth is a little bit difficult, and reaching out to individual commissioners, I think there's definitely a desire, and from the staff side too, to have a goal setting session, it's extremely important for what we do here, but maybe a consensus on working over the next week or two to identify, maybe a date about 30 days beyond what we had, so maybe in the first part of May, to continue that goal setting, and I'll reach out to individual commissioners. So, really just looking for a consensus from the commission to explore pushing that back about 30 days.
Do we have a, this is the Commissioner Griswold, do we have a consensus, we'll, we'll go from Commissioner Priesinger first?
What, consensus to push it back?
Consensus to push the goal setting session.
To May.
To May, it was scheduled for the 8th of April, and in the interim.
Sure.
Yeah. Commissioner Bowder.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Yes.
Yes, and I, I, I think that's an excellent idea, and we'll, we'll address this important activity and event and work that the commission does, and, but we'll postpone it, or at least the, the session will be postponed for a month, and then during, in the interim, the city commissioners can, you know, give the city manager, if they have any ideas as far as goals and objectives, confirmation of ones that we had last year, but also any ideas on new goals, that would be fine, you know, commissioner, one commissioner to the city manager, you know, so we don't get into any problems as far as having a, a meeting, I think that will save a little bit of time when, when we do actually have the meeting in May.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Mr. Kramer? So, we're going to go around the horn, like we normally do, Commissioner Priesinger, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, yeah, just a quick point on the difficult times we're going through, I think we all recognize that, you know, this is something that none of us, actually no one on this earth right now has gone through. There might be some people 102 years old that were alive during the Spanish Flu, but they were probably infants and don't remember it. So, we, we will get through this. It's a little bit of a different time, obviously you have social media, et cetera, much more information is available, but there's a lot of rumors on social media, a lot of cures, et cetera. I just would advise people be wary of some of those things that are reported as truths, whether they be on a national level or on a local level, especially as they pop up on social media. And there, obviously are people that are saying that we haven't done enough to mitigate the coronavirus or COVID-19, there's others that are either COVID-19 deniers or diminishers, and they're saying that we're, we're overdoing it with restrictions, et cetera. It's my hope when this whole thing is over, this COVID-19 thing is over, there, there will be more people saying that we overdid it, rather than we haven't. more people saying that we overdid it rather than we haven't done enough. I am a firm believer that we need to take heed of all that every bone from the surgeon general on down to our county health officer, medical officer, Jamie Miller saying, and we need to take this seriously and let's keep us all as healthy as possible. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I see there's quite a few people following us on Facebook Live, which I think is a really great, great thing. We're getting out good information to the public. I work with United Way, and the 211 referral service is going on now. It's been a part of the county for probably 30 years, I think, in times of disaster, and this is considered a disaster. So, anyone needing help or needing, I've gotten several calls from people needing help with rent and that sort of thing. There are agencies that help with that. I'm in the process of trying to get grants to help with that, but if you call 211, it covers, and then put in Leavenworth County, Kansas, you can get information on services in our county, so please utilize that. Thank you to everyone for being so supportive of this time. It's just been a really, really learning time for us, and I think I've seen a lot of positive and creative ways of handling it, so keep going and God bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowder. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just want to say thank you once again to everyone who has stretched out and helped the need of a neighbor or someone who they don't even know. Even though we're in some difficult times, we are growing together, which is a great thing. It's always good to see our community become united, and so, I just want to say, let's continue to pray for one another, let's continue to work together, and most of all, let us continue to be safe and God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard?
Just a reminder, a hand wave, a smile, or a kind word can go a long way. Be safe and stay strong, and God bless.
Yes, I'd just like to echo the comments of my four fellow commissioners and just say that my assessment is that the community is together in our fight against the spread of coronavirus COVID-19. I really believe that pertinent and accurate information is really the coin of the realm with respect to dealing effectively with the spread of this virus, and we are doing our best to communicate that information. Tonight, you know, under new business, we had a good update from the city manager, the police chief, and comments from the commissioners, and as I said earlier in the meeting, we will have a Facebook Live Town Hall meeting on Friday at 10:00 a.m., so I would encourage everyone to spread the word. It'll come out probably in the next day or two, but if you've liked our, the city government's Facebook page, it'll come up, I think, automatically on your feed, just, you know, when that event takes place on Friday at 10:00 a.m. Just really quickly, you know, we have a great webpage as part of our website in terms of sharing not only information about the city, but on a community basis, there's a link to the Leavenworth County Health Office on that site. There's some state information there, but the Kansas Department of Health and Environment also has a very, very good website on COVID-19, and I happened to, just before coming to the meeting this evening, just looked at their summary page. So, it looks like as of this morning, this was at 11:00 a.m., the March 24, 2020, total positive cases in Kansas, 98. And in Leavenworth County, out of those 98, there are seven, seven people with COVID-19. This was as of 11:00 a.m. this morning.
Yeah, we have eight now.
Oh, is it eight now? Okay. All right, well, as I said, this is, things change very, very quickly, but it's a good website if you're interested, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and they have one summary page that gives the public update and summary of the numbers, so I think that's a good information if you're looking to get a quick status during any particular time during the day. And finally, for all the organizations and people and citizens that are helping in one way, shape, or form, help our fellow citizens get through this crisis. Leavenworth Main Street's doing quite a bit of great work in terms of at least making resources, making known the resources that are available to our small business owners and our nonprofits. Commissioner Bowder talked about the role of United Way. Commissioner Wilson's organization, unity in the community, has been out there doing great work in the community over the last week. Coronavirus Relief Organization has done some, delivered meals to certain citizens within the county, and I think they're going to continue their work. So, all that's great. Thank you very much, and as I said earlier, let's stay safe, stay healthy, and stay home. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I move.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Preisinger.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I can.
This is Commissioner Preisinger. One quick thing, I've had a couple businesses in town reach out to me and ask me a question about, can I do this or can I do that in this particular situation? I'm not really that well-versed in answering those questions, and the city manager gave me the phone number. I think the county health department has a bank of 10 or 12 phones with people that are knowledgeable, and the number to call, I'm doing this from memory, so help me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kramer, 913-258-2000.
250.
250, yeah.
It's 913...
25, yeah, 250-2000.
Yes.
And I think there are people there that can answer particular questions. I don't feel comfortable enough, well-versed enough in all the peculiarities of this order to answer some of the questions, so I'd recommend that number. Thank you.
Yes, they dealt with a lot of those questions yesterday, and from my, I think it's called their Joint Information Center. I think, is that where that phone bank is? And they're doing some very effective work, and I could just tell, because I got a few emails along those lines, and I shoot them along to the city manager. I think in most cases, maybe all cases, he sent them along to the Joint Information Center, and I think they were handled in, you know, very proactively, and so, that's good, to have an organization at the county level to help with the execution of the things, the policies, the provisions of the health order that came out. I think it came out on Sunday, but it was effective, as chief said, at 12:01 a.m. today is when it became effective. When is that? That order is effective through, do we know which date right now?
April 23rd.
April 23rd, so that's just another piece of information we'll share. So, having said that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Or move to motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second that we adjourn this evening's meeting. We're going to go one by one, so we'll begin with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I've lost him.
Okay.
He must be gone.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Griswold, aye. The ayes have it. The vote is four to zero, so we are adjourned for this evening.